All right, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, and with this open and clear justice for all.
Okay, just want to add a couple of things to the agenda. At the end, one thing related to the copier, another thing at the end related to the stormwater law, a third thing related to MVP as a health insurance provider, and another item related to water exploration at the water treatment plant. Was that it?
Sorry, what did you say?
You want all of them?
Yes, please.
Sorry, we weren't prepared for...
So, copier, stormwater law, MVP as health insurance provider, and water treatment plant exploration project. Okay, motion, anything else for this agenda? Motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, you wanted to make an announcement about affordable housing, KK?
Yes, so after passing the law quite a few years ago and getting things in place, we finally have a project which will have affordable housing units, and the Affordable Housing Board is in the process of matching applicants on our list of eligible people to these units. So soon in the new year, we'll be celebrating our first placement of people into affordable housing units. So that's a pretty significant milestone that we're pretty psyched about.
And where?
At the Ridge, the new addition at the Ridge, two units.
Sounds good. Okay, any other announcements? No, anyone here for public comment? Not that guy. Okay, for the consent agenda, we needed to just make an amendment. We voted on it correctly, but the minutes didn't reflect what we voted on. The salary for Corey Worthman was incorrect in these minutes, so motioning that we approve the minutes with that amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's jump into NBR rezoning discussion. Want to chat with us, Joe? So we got your note with that matrix where...
It explained the matrix.
Here, I'll handle the microphone, so Joe also.
I sent a parking update that essentially explained how the matrix worked. If you can get that.
Yeah, it's super straightforward. I get it.
Okay, so that can easily be just inserted into the proposed document.
Right, so I can explain how it works. I think in our case, we probably don't even need, well, it would really be a 1 by matrix because we only have mixed use that includes residential, at least in this zone. Everything that would be constructed here has to include a residential component. At least that was my understanding.
Well, you've got office and retail, so suppose you have...
What do you mean you have office and retail?
Office on the matrix, it's different.
I know the matrix says that, but what I'm saying is the zone has always been mixed use with one of the uses being residential unless I misstate it.
Okay, so what this diagram addresses is when you have adjacent lots, and one might have some spare parking, and the other might need parking. So with this matrix, you look at the numbers between residential and perhaps lodging, we can take that out if you like, office and retail. Office and retail have different demands in terms of parking, and that's generally acknowledged by most communities. So this matrix has different ratios for if you're combining residential and office and residential and retail. So you need the whole matrix.
You don't need the whole matrix if every combination includes at least residential because then it would just be a 1 by 3 matrix. So you would have, for lodging, it's 1.1, for office, it's 1.4, and for retail, it's 1.2 because you don't ever have a situation where it's office and lodging or office and retail.
Well, you might have a situation where someone decided just to make an office, right, and residential, and that's adjacent to retail and residential.
I'm hearing that it's more about, yes, that first part is true, but we would also need it if there's things, if we're doing shared parking?
Yes, so if you've got...
To get the math right, so there might be something...
So if you've got, if we just look at Roddy's situation, for example, there's excess parking on the county physical therapy lot, but in order to work out how much there needs to be in a total of shared parking between Roddy and that lot, you need to use the ratio that we have here, so...
Walk me through that, I don't understand how that would work.
Okay, so you have two lots adjacent to each other. One has an existing use on it, and it may have some spare parking depending on how it's developed over the years. Next to that, you have a new proposed use that needs more parking than it can probably provide onsite. So by using the shared parking matrix, you can reduce the number of parking spaces that is needed for that new use that's going to go in.
I don't think that's really articulated in this example. This is talking about a single lot with two different uses.
No, it's not.
No?
It's talking about shared parking between two adjacent lots.
I didn't, where does it say that?
It's not shared...
I thought it was shared uses on the same lot.
No, 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 no. That's why it says shared parking between adjacent lots. It's like if you had, you know, a little extra money and I needed money, you'd share your money with me so we both had the right amount of money. So it's shared parking between two adjacent lots.
We might want to put just some redundancy in the language.
But the zone requires mixed use, so you can't have a...
It's not about mixed use on one lot, it's about one lot next to another lot in which you can share parking.
So what you're introducing is a third use?
Yes, so Lot A has an office with parking. Lot B is going to build retail with residential.
Correct.
In that situation, you would use the matrix to cumulatively add up the parking spots.
Show me the numbers, how would you do that? Because you're already going to be, so in your Lot B, you have residential and retail, so you're already taking the number of required spaces and dividing it by 1.2. So then if you have a neighbor who has some office spaces and you're going to share some of those office spaces, then what are you doing? You're dividing it again?
No, you're mitigating the need for the...
I understand the concept, but I just don't understand the arithmetic.
Okay.
Because you've already divided, you've already divided the number of spots once, and now you're introducing a second neighboring lot, how does that factor in?
It factors in whenever there isn't sufficient parking for the first lot, and they're looking to utilize open space or open spaces, pardon me, not open spaces, in the neighboring lot. This formula gives some idea to analyze and predict what would be required and what would be possible.
So, you know, it's...
I'm totally lost.
I don't think that's the...
Can I try and interpret what you're saying, that if you have these multipliers, you don't need the matrix?
These multipliers are from the matrix.
Yeah, okay, so you can use that. I mean, some people are visual learners, some people like to use columns instead, so it really depends on the way you kind of work through the world. So yeah, you can use those instead.
I'm not using something different, I'm just using a 1 by 3 matrix instead of, because we're, we don't have, this zone does not allow someone to build something that's lodging in office or lodging in retail.
No, you can take the lodging out.
Right, so, but if a project is constructed, it has two uses already, so you've already divided the number of spots.
Okay, what we're doing is we're taking, if we wanted to look at, say, a building which had both residential and office and residential and retail, you would use the office and retail matrix to calculate the number by which you could reduce the shared parking need.
Yes.
Okay?
100%, but I don't understand why we're talking about a neighboring lot. That's not how this matrix works.
Couldn't it work with both? I mean, doesn't, isn't the math have to add up to the same number irrespective of it's coming from a different place?
So like even look in the example, right? So you're talking about a building that has, it requires 10 parking spaces for residential and 12 parking spaces for office, so it's a total of 22. So you look at the number from the matrix of 1.4, so 22 divided by 1.4, and that is, you know, rounds up to 16 spots.
Instead of 22.
Correct, so then what you're saying is then you also have a neighbor who has some spaces that could be used at this property.
That's the total number of spaces that you need to provide because you can share the spaces next door.
I think in the real world, if a lot is full and someone goes to do business, say, at the retail portion, and there's spaces in the lot next door, they're going to use the lot next door. We're just trying with this matrix to figure out at what point the existing lot and the lot next door are not sufficient, and we have created a cluster of them.
I understand the concept, just walk me through an example.
Well, I think your numbers work just as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, maybe it is just...
So if you use the ratio numbers instead of the matrix, that's fine. I mean, it's the same concept.
Yeah, I think we should just go with that, especially since we don't have these other...
It's a 1 by 3 matrix, it's not, it's not a, it's not a 4 by 4.
Right, but you can just say it that way, just as easy.
Yeah, it just, it's like the way, you know, you think. Okay, could we, can we back up a little because I'd like to know where we are in this process? There've been some workshops, there's been some discussion, there've been some suggestions about various things in the proposed ordinance, and I believe you've come to some kind of working draft.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what we're trying to do today is, at least, we're going to go through a few different topics, but, you know, one of the sticking points or one challenging topic is parking. So at our last meeting, we said, why don't we start with a conversation about parking? So we do have a working draft, you know, because what are the, what are the challenging issues? You know, this is pretty straightforward stuff, like numbers...
Well, it's not straightforward stuff.
Okay, well, we can, I think it's pretty straightforward. So the list is...
Let me just give you a little bit of background here. What we're trying to do here is fix the problems that have arisen by having flawed ordinance to deal with that the planning board has been floundering with. So what we've done is tried to identify issues that were problematic in that, we've looked at best practices, we've compared ordinances over many different places to find similar situations to New Paltz, and the suggestions we're making are based on best practices. They're based on a great deal of research and a great deal of interaction with knowledgeable people in the field, including both the current planning board chair and a past planning board chair, Floyd Niffen, who served on our committee. So when we come up with the suggestions, they aren't arbitrary and capricious, they are based on a great deal of research, and so if some of them need to be explained in a little more detail, I'll be glad to give you the background on those. But in terms of making changes, understand that we're basing this on a wide amount of research and a lot of deep thought by the committee.
Yeah, everyone understands that. I think everyone's pleased with the folks who served on the committee and the deliverable the committee supplied, and so we take that, you know, essentially list of recommendations, and we're just going over it. For instance, the recommendation had to do with height and number of stories, so this board had a conversation about height and number of stories, and the majority of this board said, yeah, let's go with what the committee recommended.
Okay.
And it was not unanimous.
Well, unanimity doesn't often happen, although I have to say that in terms of the NBR committee, the review committee, all of our decisions were unanimous, so...
And one, just helpful thing I'd like to throw in there, when I looked through the red line version, there were a lot of comments, you know, when you clicked the little boxes on the side that had just simple questions of why, and they were all good questions. But I think in many of those topics, the why is answered, and it might be helpful if, not right now, and maybe not at a public meeting, but if the chairs of the committee sat down with anyone from the board who wanted to know why, because there's answers to those questions, but it would probably take hours to go through them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm appreciative of that. I mean, I also, I think we should have the conversations here, but I also feel like we have to be thoughtful about our use of time. I just want to, I have to say, we totally get that, and we're totally appreciative of everybody's work, but we have to do our due diligence too, and we have to get up to speed, and it's not the only thing that we're looking at. We did give, we did give ourselves a deadline last meeting though, because I said, hey, let's figure out when we want to say, okay, this is it, and we're going to send it to public hearing because it is a code change, so it does need to get to public hearing. So it is on our radar that we want to cross at least, maybe not the final finish line, but that milestone.
Yeah, but that's kind of like shutting down the government before the government's ready to actually have a finished product that they want to deal with because...
I don't know.
No, it's aspirational, it's aspirational. We're not holding our, we're not holding our feet to the fire if we don't get it done.
All right, could we start with onsite parking guidelines because you got into the matrix and...
Can I just say one little thing that I don't want to forget? When Tim and I were doing, we had to take the text from the PDF because we didn't have a Word doc, so I didn't have any of the graphics in the way that I grabbed that.
I'll be happy to send you...
So I just need the Word doc.
I'll send you the Word doc.
Thank you.
Okay, it was written in an older version, but...
It's fine.
So long as you click the compatibility box, it'll handle that.
Yeah, I just want to grab the graphics that we need.
Okay, so in terms of the onsite parking guidelines, the recommendation that Brad brought to you at the workshop meeting was something that Mayor Rogers reported on at the village board meeting last week, and that seemed to be a number that was 0.5 per unit plus 0.5 per bedroom plus 0.1 for guest maintenance or service. So that meant that studios and one-bedroom apartments needed 1.1 spaces, two-bedroom apartments needed 1.6, three-bedroom needed 2.1, and four needed 2.6, and those were the numbers that you stated at the last meeting. So my question is, is that something that's now being abandoned, or is that something that you're going to go forward with?
We're still, that's still one of our items on our list that we're still discussing.
Okay, because the idea of 0.5 as a space is completely ridiculous unless you're dealing with old people in a home who are not ambulatory in any way, shape, or form. All right, so...
Well, I think another condition that we can include with parking is that, like, the idea of having 1.1 spaces per studio or one bedroom, that only works for a building that has greater than X number of units.
True.
That obviously does not work for a single-family home. To your point, there's no such thing as 1/10...
Well, this is for multiple family dwelling, right. Okay, so...
The whole zone is for, the whole zone is zoned for multiple-story units, so that...
It is, but, but no, the only thing that is required is multi-story mixed use, so technically you could have a large studio apartment.
In theory, but I don't think, the economics would not support that, and no one would use this, this, these properties and these parcels with the land and commercial value they have to do that unless it's a...
Sure, we have, we have an example downtown New Paltz where a large penthouse apartment is being constructed for, for one individual, so...
But that's on top of two stories of commercial. That's on top of two stories of commercial.
Right, but you could easily carve up that amount of square footage into more units, so that, that's a real life, living example.
Can we just focus on this right now? Because I want to go to B, which has been misinterpreted. Commercial uses should be one space for each 200 that replaced 500 feet, the dash should not have been in there, and...
I think, yeah, we already took that out.
Okay, so...
I don't even have it on my computer.
In terms of dealing with that issue tonight, I looked at various other communities that have similar parking issues to New Paltz, although that, it's very difficult because we have a really constrained...
We're so unique.
We are, but not in a good way because we have far less municipal parking than many other places. But places that are dealing with those same kind of issues in terms of commercial, I looked at Village of Reinbeck, the Lloyd Walkway, which have been using as a similar kind of zone to ours, Poughkeepsie City Walkway on the other end, and also Kingston zoning in terms of how much parking spaces they require for things like retail and office spaces. And they range between 200 square feet per internal space, per space, and 333. So going up to 500 is really problematic, and those are cities which have, you know, significant parking issues, particularly in Kingston, which in many ways has a parking deficit too.
What is it in Kingston?
In Kingston, oh, I can give you the exact numbers here. So, Poughkeepsie Walkway is one space per 300 square foot internal space for both offices and retail. Kingston, office, one space per 300 square foot internal, and retail, one space per 200 square foot, so...
So office 300, retail 200 in Kingston?
Yeah, sometimes in other places, they use a number that's like four spaces per 1,000 interior square foot.
So yeah, they have different rules for Uptown than...
Can I, can I respond to this idea that you would have 200 square feet for each parking spot, right? So let's use just like simple, simple numbers. So you have a 10,000-square-foot retail space, right? So you divide 10,000 by 200 square feet, then you would need 50 parking spots, right? Excluding aisles, a parking spot is 9 by 16 feet, 144 square feet.
Not all parking spots are created equal, by the way, they're different.
Well, in the village, we have requirements. Parking spots have to be of a certain size, so...
She said it would be 200, not 500.
I know, she's saying we shouldn't make that edit that way. She's arguing against that edit.
I'm just telling you what, what other communities use in terms of...
I'm trying to, I'm trying to illustrate using, using numbers, how, how...
They're using these numbers...
...easy it would be to require this amount of parking for, so 10,000-square-foot retail space divided by 200...
I'm not feeling with 10,000.
Please stop interrupting me.
Okay, well...
I'm using simple numbers. We can use, we can use a 5,000-square-foot retail space. 5,000 divided by 200 is 25, 25 parking spaces, right? So if you do 144, that's the amount of square footage based on how large a parking spot has to be in the Village of New Paltz, it has to be 9 by 16 feet. So 9 times 16 is 144, 144 times 25 equals 3,600 square feet, and that excludes aisles, right? You need an aisle to be 26 feet wide, right? So we're basically suggesting...
We're discussing at cross purposes here. I'm telling you what the codes are in these cities and villages that you could compare to comparable situations in terms of scarcity of parking or intensity of development. So those are what their codes are.
Right, and what I care about is reality, and if you require a retail space to have as much parking as the entire retail space itself, like, that just does not make sense. Like, it's just simply does not make sense to have a parking lot the exact same size as the retail space.
But I think, Tim, you're speaking in terms of a position or a proposed policy. What Joe is speaking of is what we have discovered as best practice in the real world, what's actually workable in, in...
We're dealing with square footage here, remember? Square footage, you've got to take the square root.
That's what I'm doing, is I'm using square footage. So if you have a 5,000-square-foot retail space, you're suggesting that you have a comparable amount of parking, like, almost like the parking lot is the size of the retail space.
Again, the language is not she's proposing, best practices show us this is what is going to be.
No, no, she is proposing it because she is...
I'm not proposing it, I'm telling you, this is what, this is what other communities use.
No, you are proposing it because it says...
So how would you suggest the number be?
I would say it should be somewhere between 200 and 300, or 300.
Apparently, our most recent draft says 500.
Yeah, I thought Brad said get rid of the dash.
Brad said 500.
Yeah, Brad, I'm pretty sure he said that, I mean, we can go to the table.
No, because what Brad said, I communicated with Brad about this, and he said, we never, we never came actually up with a number. We said somewhere between 200 and 400, but we never actually voted on that.
Okay, I'm just explaining why the draft says that. We can continue the discussion of what it should actually be.
So I guess I'd like to understand why we would be considering and talking about 500 feet when there's no example of something like that that we, you know, in the, in the surrounding villages that we've looked at.
What cities?
So I, you know...
What part of Kingston is this? I mean, we have different guidelines for all different...
Well, this is a general guideline for Kingston. You're basically, you know...
I just would think that it might be different, you know, in a mini mall, you know, placed than in a, on the strand or uptown, I'm just curious.
Then let's not use Kingston, let's use Reinbeck.
There was variance.
Let's use Reinbeck, let's use Lloyd.
And which one is Reinbeck? What was the number for Reinbeck?
Reinbeck.
Lloyd, I'm not feeling the Walkway ones, but Reinbeck, I think it's comparable.
Well, they have a professional office, one or 200 square foot. Well, they have a professional office, one for 200 square foot, retail and service, one for 200. So I'm just telling you what, what those are. And here's the Kingston parking regulations, which are much more detailed, including things like grocery, one space for every 200 square foot of floor area, gasoline station, one space for every 200 square foot of floor area. I don't know how they calculate that. Personal service, one space for every 200 square foot of floor area. So, I mean, these, I'm just telling you what the best practices are in these numbers, so you have some grasp of where these numbers come from.
I appreciate that, and I'm all about the best practices thing. I do it for a living, right, to figure these, to compile them. But my professional opinion is that we're requiring too much parking everywhere. So I don't know that I would just say, okay, that's what it is in Reinbeck, so that's what we should do. I feel like I need to, I don't know, I need to noodle on it a little bit more, but...
Where do you think we're requiring too much parking, Katie?
Everywhere.
Everywhere? Because I think about the Medusa Building that was built and that doesn't have enough parking. You know, and I'm thinking about Tim's example, you know, of retail. I think about where a convenient deli is, and that parking lot's about the same size as that, all of those establishments. You think about Tops Shop, right? These are parking lots that are very full, and they're large parking lots compared to the stores that they're servicing.
Yeah, depending on time of day, but, yeah.
So...
Yeah, but their times are full.
Right.
Right, we have to plan for the worst.
I live that one a lot, as I know you want to.
I'm very sensitive. I don't want extra parking lots that we don't need, but if we create a problem, then people are just going to be driving around looking for parking spots, and then that creates more of a traffic problem. And in this zone, there is no room for error because there is no public parking anywhere in this area.
And I think as a board, you know...
I hear you, it's a balancing act.
We have had a lot of success, and you can go back to the school board, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to, like with the security possible law, we took an existing law and modeled that to that. Plastic bag law, we took existing laws and modeled that to that. So I think if, when we're, when we're trying to make these decisions, it, it's not prudent, and it's not our practice to reinvent the wheel. We take a look at best practices and what works in the real world. And I think that's where, that was certainly the bias of the, the committee.
This is a song to respond to, right, though, because also best practice, you know, pre-2004 is that gay marriage was illegal too, right? So...
I really agree. This is, this is apples and oranges. I mean, this is apples and oranges.
It's a provocative statement, but the point is, is that what we think is best practice changes over time. And certainly, changing code in local government is...
That's true.
...crucial, is behind usually the curve of where we need to go.
If we had more municipal parking, if we had other avenues for parking.
Yes.
But because of the college, we have a particularly complicated situation here in that the students have a lot of cars, and they drive around a lot, and they park in a lot of different places, including, you know, I mean, there's just a huge amount of traffic, and there's a lot of need for more parking spaces, so...
We, we know this.
I know you know this, but if you are not requiring new businesses to provide at least adequate parking, if you're like downgrading the amount of parking that they have to provide as a bare minimum, then you're just making a bad situation much, much worse. So that's why we're looking at best practices in other communities that face similar difficulties in terms of providing enough parking.
I disagree, I disagree. I mean, from what I understand, that when you accommodate cars, you just end up with more cars. And when you add parking, you just, you end up with just more impervious surface. And, you know, these are the numbers. You have, you're, we're talking about a 5,000 square foot space, and based on 200 square feet per space, you would need nearly a 10,000 square foot parking lot, based on how much square footage you need to accommodate nine by 16-foot parking spaces plus an aisle.
Which doesn't make sense when you're on density.
Well, I'm just giving you what are, what other communities do. I mean, if Newpalt's wants to exacerbate the parking problem to the point where we are, you know, really just driving around in circles trying to find a place to, to park, it's not going to make people give up their cars. We can't get anywhere. There's minimal public transportation here. So that's the problem.
Can you remind me, are these both guidelines, or are they, is commercial written in stone as a rule? Parking parameters are guidelines, right?
Well, in the village, commercial is a guideline.
Although it looks like you're...
But residential is a requirement, but the, the NBR seems...
Commercial was meant to embrace both retail and office.
Right, I just want to make sure I understand. This says that they're both guidelines, whereas in other places, in the...
Yes, they could be used as guidelines. They may be mitigating circumstances. So this is a guideline.
Right, but in other, my point is, in other places in the village, it's a rule. So, yes.
But we're talking about, you know, with 500 versus 200, we're talking about a dramatic reduction in, in the supply of parking spaces in a community that is hurting for parking. If we want to build a parking deck, maybe we can consider some of these, these numbers. But, you know, and I, and I really appreciate and sympathize that we are unique and that we're trying to drive social and behavioral change via some of the work we're doing. But if you look at what's happening with the evolution of technology, is to make everyone still be able to have an individual car, but make it run on solar, make it run on hydrogen, make it run on water.
Make it drive itself.
But, but all the innovation is trying, is, you know, I wish...
But drive itself helps with getting parking to a remote location away from...
You want to be filled with cars driving around with nobody in them. I mean, it's better.
Well, before we get to that, though, it is shared. It's the Lyft and the Uber model. And, I mean, we could, we could have Scott Levine from campus, he's my go-to guy, talk about this. I go to him all the time. I'm like, well, when is it going to happen? Because I have to make decisions now about what you all think is going to happen in 20 years.
Albany just got Lyft, Uber up there, so that took a long time.
Right, so it's not that, but it's not necessarily... The whole idea is the shared economy, right? And that, you know, you don't need one car. It's, it's the pressure of the, of people not being able to afford the cars, bumping up the lifestyle choice to want to be in a walkable community, right? So there's, there's multiple pressures.
That's if you have adequate public transport. If we were living in Portland, these things would make sense.
There's a lot of dominos, right? And we have to work on all fronts. This is just one front. I think all of us take a holistic view now. I'm sorry, I wanted to say something.
Both of those examples suggest that you need less parking, not more parking. If you have, if you have Lyft and Uber, then you need fewer cars. If you have self-driving cars, you need fewer parking spaces, because then your car can drop you off and then go park in some other parking spot, not six feet next to your house.
But to, to go with the, the aspirational sorts of numbers, the fewer parking spots, that's, seems like, like...
It's reverse logic.
Making a wager, making a wager that something will happen, that we would like to see happen. We don't know if it will happen when we want it to happen, and we certainly don't know that it will happen by two or three years from now, when some of these projects are up and running. And if we're wrong, we've totally screwed over our community. It's, this is, this is dicey stuff. We can't be wrong. We have to err on the side of caution.
Yeah, because...
I think that's a bit hyperbolic, that we've...
Well, no, I don't think so at all.
...ourselves over. And I think that, crap. The built environment, I have to put my sociologist hat on second, changes behavior more than anything else, right? When we didn't have recycling bins to recycle, people didn't recycle. Now we have a recycling bin in every office, and people recycle. It's not because all of a sudden the value made it so everybody did. It made it so the structure of our lives, so we can do it. So we have to create built envi- environments to disincentivize our auto-dependent economy. That doesn't mean I don't hear you about our particular challenges at this very...
Well, why do we limit the students and tell them they can't bring their cars? That would be very...
We can do that on campus, but we can't, the college can't tell people who are living in the community if they can have a car or not.
Right.
The thought already crossed my mind this evening, wouldn't that be nice? But no, we can't regulate that behavior outside of the campus footprint.
Yeah, Dawn, I'm with you. This is an absolute wager. This is betting that everything else that we need to come into play is all going to magically fall together to have enough parking. We know what we have today. We have an issue, and I'd be dead set against reducing parking to 500 square feet. It is, is, is there any local comparison for that?
No.
Is anyone else using 500 feet, other than perhaps a city?
No.
I mean, we're not Queens.
Both cities are using either three or 200 square feet interior space, or parking space.
In, in retail, commercial zones, or in mixed-use zones?
Yes. Well, they, that's, you know, that works out in the same kind of situation.
And there's a point I, I wanted to make earlier in the meeting, just, just, I keep, keeps coming and going. Up until the last, I think, two meetings of the, of the NBR subcommittee, a majority of the current board created this. Dennis and Bill and I, before Bill was elected, he missed the last two meetings because he had been elected, we all helped draft this. This was created by a majority of our board. So if you have questions or doubts, you know, just turn to the people on your left and your right, and, and we can maybe give you some background.
So, for example, in Kingston, a multifamily dwelling with three units needs six spaces. So that's comparable to what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a terrible mistake. A three-bedroom unit needing six spaces?
No, a three-unit multifamily dwelling that might have more than one bedroom, might have...
Well, that, that really matters, though. A, a three-unit could be...
Three units, but, but they may have two bedrooms, so they need the space for each bedroom. That's what it says.
And that's a, that's less parking than what you're suggesting. You're suggesting one and a half spots per bedroom.
I don't know.
What you just described was one spot per bedroom.
I don't know how many bedrooms there are in these units.
That matters.
Yeah, but that, that information is not the, the information that is available to us.
Right.
So it doesn't matter. We should probably find out, and we can talk about that when we know.
I'm confused. What are you reading from?
I'm reading from Kingston parking regulations.
Okay.
Because the mayor wanted to know what the residential requirements were.
Okay.
A single-family house, two spaces. A duplex, four spaces. Three units, which is probably similar, you know, they're just going two, four, six. So...
So that's one spot per bedroom?
Not necessarily. I don't know if these multifamily dwellings with three units, a unit might be a two-bedroom unit, or a one-bedroom.
Or a four-bedroom.
Or it might, might, you know...
Well, yet, the way they're presenting it is different. I mean, we're basing everything on bedrooms.
We're presenting it in a different way because we have a different situation. But certainly, the commercial space, 300 would be a much more reasonable number than 500, as demonstrated by all these other communities that I've researched.
Okay, so this is a sticking point that we'll just have to vote on when we're ready to vote on the individual items. I, I'm sitting here right now, I, I don't know exactly what number I am comfortable with. I need to think about it some more.
Well, I, that's fine. I think it is important to state that, or just restate that I think, even considering the 500-foot number will be wildly irresponsible. And if that wager is wrong, we will have done damage to our community in terms of the quality of life and the ability of people to utilize these, these mixed-use facilities that we're, we're encouraging. If they can't park at them, it's, it's not what we're trying to do.
Another thing to consider, Dawn, is if we're reducing the amount of parking that's required for the retailer or the office, then that's just more residential units that can be packed in, because then they'll have the parking for it. There's more potential build-out, which is nice as far as our housing supply, but as far as what our community can support, the more people we have, the more cars we have. Love to have a community with no cars, but it's just not realistic any time in the very near future. I can tell, I sat through, yesterday, I sat through two different lights on our community twice before managing to get through them. How many more people are going to add to our community? I'm Dawn Amisobots.
Well, the people are coming. I was at the RPA Regional Plan, Fourth Plan announcement last week, and the people are coming, both as full-time residents and day visitors, whether we like it or not. All projections are that more people are coming here to live and to visit. So that is 100% on my radar.
At a certain point, we become a city.
Yeah, mostly make my car. You know, if you're going to come for the day, unless you live in, in Rosendale, you know, you're likely going to...
Well, I'd like to think that the Empire Trail is going to have people, you know, put their bike on, you know, the train in the city, ride up to Poughkeepsie, and then ride across the walkway. So they're going to be coming in many different ways. So I'm thinking more, I'm thinking as the, the car traffic, as well as making it safe for micros and pedestrians.
Well, I'd love to see a world in which the ratio of bicyclists to automobiles coming to our, our community are one to one, but I just don't see that as realistic.
Right. Well, we have, but we have to nurture it. We have to do the best of our ability. This, this is, it's, it's a balancing act.
But by forcing people to park on Route 32 in the shoulder, because there's no parking, you know, that's, I, you know, I know we need to create a reality, but there's not, if we don't have adequate parking, there's not any good options.
We just keep saying the same things over and over again. I don't know if it's productive anymore.
I'm optimistic that the county's going to find religion on supporting Newpalt's with the municipal parking lot, because, you know, we're an important cash generator for all their sales tax revenues. So they have to protect the, the goose of Newpalt's that keeps on giving.
Well, they did that with the parking lot, and unfortunately, nothing else was built out there, and then they took it away because it wasn't being utilized. And it's tragic because maybe they, it was just there a little bit too early before the rest of the zone was ready for it.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, that's gone. And so I wonder how hesitant they might be to give us more parking, given that they tried it already, didn't see that it was being utilized enough, and then stopped funding it.
Doesn't mean you don't ask. It doesn't mean you...
Oh, no. I mean, if there's one thing Tim's really good at, it's asking everybody for money, whether it's the county or the state, but...
And if we should get additional parking, I'd be the first in line to come back and revisit this and modify this. But until that point, we have to be judicious, and we have to be careful.
We want to encourage, but we don't want to zone complete problems.
So I circulated, so we, we spoke, I'm going to shift topics now. We're going to come back on parking. So the, the proposal originally included making roof decks forbidden, but we've worked on some language. I think Brad and Dennis both had really valuable suggestions when we were working on this. And then I shared the, the thoughts with our building inspector, Bryant. So I circulated, I think it's five points regarding roof decks, and then I want to add a sixth. The sixth point would be, roof decks may not be outfitted with outdoor speakers, and we need some language that says no amplification is permitted on the roofs. And then the, the other ones that I circulated, this is, these were reserved for residential use only, not to be used for customers or commercial tenants. Decks must remain open for all tenants and may not be reserved for private parties. Under no circumstance may roof decks' maximum occupancy load be surpassed. MAC occupancy will be determined using New York State Fire Prevention and Building Codes. And then this was the percentage thing that we were wrestling with last time that I shared with Bryant. He said that it seemed like it made sense. The deck area may not be greater than 65% of the available roof space, with the non-deck area positioned as a buffer between the deck and nearby residential neighborhoods. Then the lighting pieces, deck lighting fixtures must be aimed down and may not be positioned more than three feet above deck surface.
Correct, yes.
So I thought we did a good job of coming up with a list that, you know, where roof decks can occur, but we, we've, you know, we've created some, some fairly narrow bands around how they would work.
Yes, I think that's an excellent suggestion. And my suggestion would be that it goes right into the zoning code, so that people are aware of that, rather than just saying, you have to have a special permit.
Yeah, absolutely. That would, that's what we were thinking, is that these, this list of six would be in the zoning.
Okay, so you're saying we're abandoning the special use totally? It's just going to be this? It's not going to be special use and this?
By special use permit, and you say, these are the conditions of special use permit.
Yeah, I'm not arguing for or against. I just want to be clear on if the special use permit is in or out, and I really have a strong position on it.
Yeah, because the advantage of the special use permit was that it allows us to take away the roof if they're not using it correctly.
The special use permit has to be reapplied for in... The special use permit has to be reapplied for and re- granted.
Yeah, yeah.
So consequently, it means you have a better monitoring.
Yeah.
Last night, in the village planning board meeting, they reiterated all of those requirements that I think Bill Murray also worked on, as well as Brad. And so they were explaining that to Mr. Scheffler in terms of the roof deck usage.
So they're using the same for zero places, what you're saying?
Yes. Because I wrote down what Mayor Rogers said last week in the report that he made about all of this, and I have the list of guidelines with the addition. They also added the no amplification of loudspeakers on the deck.
Yeah, I think no installed speakers, no permanently installed speakers, that's one good step, and then have an additional line that says no amplified sound. There was a comment at last night's planning board that spoke about wardrobes, which I thought was an overreach, so I'd be fine if we didn't.
What wardrobe?
There was a public comment, and they were referring to a New York Times article, and they were talking about the challenges of roof decks, and sometimes people wear clothing that might not be appropriate. But I think we can probably...
Oh, with that kind of...
Yeah, I didn't get that at first either.
I thought people would drag in wardrobes onto the deck, having fashion...
Plumb spaces.
Well, that's New York City, but I think the whole idea behind that was to have a specific code, like you're suggesting, that has to be applied in terms of roof decks. And also, they used the 65% available space, the rest being reserved for mechanical uses and as a buffer between the roof deck and surrounding residential.
Yeah, that works well.
And we also have the provision that the 65% would be in the section of the roof away from UG and Street.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I also really like, I forgot whether it was Dennis or Brad, who was talking about the idea of saying the roof deck can only be used by, it has to always be available to all residents, like it cannot be reserved for any private party.
Right.
I think that helps.
That was in there.
And that allows residents to police the area themselves. You can't have all these people here, I have a right to be here, and if you don't get your 25 friends out of here, I'm gonna call...
There was also a discussion of the hours during which the decks could be open.
Yeah. I'm not in favor of limiting hours, because people walk, work all sorts of hours, and...
Well, often they walk, it's an issue.
What we're trying to create is an environment where, if you're going up there late at night, you're going up there for the same reasons, whether it's nighttime or daytime. You're going up there to just be outside and use it as your outdoor space, because you're a residential tenant.
Yeah, I'm comfortable not having the time limits on it as long as it's a special use permit, because then if it's not being as responsibly, it gives us the ability to do something about it after the fact. But I'm with you, if someone wants to go out and observe the stars at night, we shouldn't keep them doing that.
But they couldn't crank, they shouldn't crank their tunes, you know?
They're not, yeah, they're not allowed, they're not allowed. I mean, we've essentially created really tight boundaries where it's not to be used for large gatherings. That's not what it's for.
And it's very wise to base it on New York State building standards and fire prevention standards, because then you have like another, you know, justification for the reasons you're putting this into effect.
And I spoke with Bryant about that as well, and he was talking about, like, you need two means of egress once it's of a certain size, too. So we don't need to put that in this zoning, because that's all as per New York State Fire Prevention and Building Codes.
Right. Okay, another question I had was...
Whoa, so we just did roof decks?
Yeah.
So why don't we, like, open the champagne or something?
Well, I'm just trying...
I can't do it backwards, if anyone else can, no, no, no.
I'm just trying to see where we're at.
Please celebrate the little victories.
Yeah, please celebrate the little victories.
Yeah.
Because in terms of the draft document that I got to see, that seemed to be a special permit issue, but now we have guidelines for the requirements of the special permit. So, you know, every little victory is a victory.
And we can do it, we can all be in very different places at the start, but come together and go to it.
Yeah, we're all on board, it's SUP with those six conditions.
Okay, great. So let me ask you another question, and that is about Rock Hill Valley rail trail access.
Yes, that's on the list.
Which came up last night in the village planning board meeting. At the meeting where I was unfortunately unable to attend, but Kara Lee came, she reported that there was discussion, and it was agreed that there shouldn't be another access point between...
Broadhead and Mulberry.
Broadhead and Mulberry, and that the road was sufficient, and that north of that, there should be, north of Trip 13, there should be potentially no more than two.
Can we back up one second? So Broadhead and Mulberry, is that because we already have an access point?
Yeah.
Right, 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 so we already have from Village Pizza, right?
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah.
It's a guerrilla.
It's guerrilla, but so that's what we were...
That's what we call a social trail.
A social trail, I like that, too. So we were wrestling with that last time, because we wanted to be, we wanna, we wanna have a finite number of access points.
Right, because of the liability issues, right?
Less concerned about the liability issues, just concerned about how the trail, how the rail trail works. It shouldn't just have like all these connections. But, so then if we say that there is, and I think one access point between Broadway and Mulberry works, so if we say we already have one, so we wanna not allow any more, do we then try to formalize the existing one? Because we probably all agree, it's probably only social and it's not formal.
I don't think we should formalize it, because, well, in order to formalize it, you need to really look at what the village policy is with access to the rail trail, and that needs to be a more formalized policy. Because this, this language currently in the zoning ordinance, which has been reinserted, that one should encourage more access points, and that's not in the spirit of what the Rock Hill Valley rail trail is.
I think we're all on the same page, we don't want like a...
Everything I said is in my notes from last time.
We want a finite number of access points, and the way the language currently reads, it's an unlimited number of access points.
Yeah, and access points are encouraged.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
So we were definitely wrestling with the idea of having a finite number.
Okay. Well, I'm...
And then the other challenge that we have, too, is, so we have these guerrilla trails or these social trails or paths of the desire, or whatever we wanna call them. They don't have any rules, right?
No, they're illegal, actually.
So I've reached out to the land trust, because we're gonna have to come up with a template that we can apply if, to any connecting thing. So, you know, I sent a note to Christy DeBoer, and she was like, yes, that makes sense, that's what we need to do. Because we currently don't have those. But they exist, like, we all know where they are. You know, there's, you know, not in this zone, but, you know, a well-used one is behind the post office that connects folks to town and country. And I think there's great value in having those things. We want that kind of connectivity across properties to encourage people to walk instead of, like, if you live in town and country, you should walk up to Bacchus as opposed to driving your car, and that makes it easier by using that kind of access point, but currently, that access point is not legal.
It's also one of the more littered spots of the rail trail. But I agree, we do want to encourage that and give people more pedestrian thoroughfares to use to get them out of their car. But I'm not sure if legitimizing the access behind Village Pizza, does that, is there any advantage to that? Or just saying that we have enough access and focusing on how much access we wanna have?
Well, I think we all like the idea of not having more than one access point between Mulberry and Broadhead. So there's got, if there's one, where is it? Is it Salvation Army, is it Village Pizza, or is it Ryan?
It's Village Pizza, because there's actually a drain there.
Yeah.
So there's a little slope, you know, so legitimizing that as an access point is gonna incur even more problematic issues.
Stairs potentially.
Yep.
Or if we just use the language no additional, that would kind of cover it.
I mean, it wouldn't legitimize, but it wouldn't prevent any other, if any other guerrilla trails or any other informal trails were begun to be formed, we could say, no, no additional.
Okay, Don, so how's this, then? So if we say, well, no additional, but then we're kind of tipping our hat to the fact that that thing exists.
That's what we're doing at the table in this conversation.
But I, I was thinking that we could almost have like a, so the section of this zone that is north of Mulberry, there's a few properties, right? So if, say, we limit that to two, you could only have two access points between Huguenot and Mulberry. And I think we floated the idea of like first come, first served. So it's like if you're, if you have a project and you wanna jump through the hoops of legitimizing your connection and, you know, dotting i's and crossing p's with the land trust and with the village, and then you've signed on to make sure that you're managing the trash, it's your connection.
That sounds good to me, as long as we make sure that there's enough space in between, because we don't want the first two people to be neighbors in the zone, get the two access spots, when they could be spread out a little bit more.
I think we could have, we could have language that says it has to be X feet off
Yeah, that's what I was saying last time.
the roads, and it can't be X feet from another one.
Perfect.
I wrote down 200 feet between...
So then that goes back, so then that goes back to the Broadhead-Mulberry one. If we say we only want one there, we almost are giving one of those properties the chance to, you know, let's say Salvation Army wants to put one in, and it met the criteria in terms of the spacing, then they would get it, and then the middle property would be officially illegal.
Well, we could also make the size requirement to...
Yeah.
If we meet the distance requirement between the access points, the distance between Mulberry and Broadhead, then they wouldn't be able to put one in the middle. Right? If we say they can't be, you know, whatever the distances of those three properties, I'm not gonna even guess what they are, but if we say, all right, this 500 feet, they can't be within 500 feet, and then nobody would legally be able to put one in.
In the middle.
Right, in between Broadhead and Mulberry, because there would be two access points. If we just make the distance to...
But I thought we were comfortable with the idea of having one access point. Or we were comfortable with one connector between...
I think we're all good.
The ability we can have one. Another way to look at it is, no connection that did not exist prior to January 1st, 2018 shall be established.
Right, no new connection.
You know how this thing is really supposed to work, right? Since the Walker Valley Land Trust administers our conservation easement, what they are supposed to, so let's say Salvation Army were to develop their site and put in a legal connection based on the zoning, if we agreed to the zoning, then they put it in. Then the land trust is really supposed to enforce the conservation easement and require Village Pizza to get rid of theirs. That's how that would, that's how that should work.
They have legal authority to do that.
So they have the legal...
By the village board. The only way that any access can be granted to the rail trail is by the village board, because that is a village linear park.
Right, but we've...
The conservation easement is really kind of a different thing. That establishes, you know, a baseline situation in terms of what can be built and what can be done.
Right, but when someone is in violation of the conservation easement, it's the responsibility of the administrator of that conservation easement to write a letter to that property owner and say that you're violating the CE that we administer on the village-owned property. That's how that's supposed to work.
I realize that.
So, if we're all kind of comfortable with the, because it's Little League to the ice cream place, you know, in the real world, that's how it's used very often. If we're comfortable with that, I guess it makes sense to formalize it or to ask the Walker Valley Land Trust to formalize it. One thing that I, one scenario which is unlikely but concerns me is if in your example, Tim, Salvation Army were to develop their site and were to establish a legal connection, possible for them to say it's only for our residents? Possible for such an entity to say, on my side of the connection, it's my property and no trespassing Little League? It is.
To me, if somebody's developing a mixed-use project, though, you'd presume that there would be some sort of retail, they want people, they want foot traffic.
Yeah, they'd have an ice cream place of their own, huh? Okay.
So the language in the draft is a little confusing, Dan, because...
Okay, let's not worry about what it said.
Okay.
I feel like I'm up to speed at where we're at conceptually, and then we can figure out what the right language is. So, conceptually, where are we at?
A maximum of two access points between Mulberry and Huguenot? That was...
And one between Broadhead and, maybe we just leave it that simple, just say that, and then let...
Less said, soonest meant it, is all my grandmother used to say.
But then you do run into that problem, say you have the first two properties that are north of Mulberry, and they get access point, access point.
Right, just say, no new access points within 500 feet of an existing access point. And then, because there's street access from Mulberry and Broadhead, Salvation Army and the former Napa Building would both be too close to an existing entrance, they wouldn't be eligible.
All right, so we have to figure out what X is in the no access greater than X feet distance between them, or whatever, I'm not, you know what I mean. So, a maximum of two more access points between Mulberry and Huguenot Street, a maximum of one more spot between Mulberry and Broad, and no access points that are closer together than X feet.
Sure, pencil that in.
And in that scenario, how are we considering?
I'm saying us.
Right.
The royal, let's pencil that in a second.
How are we considering the, what, the rail trail access point behind what used to be the parking ride? Is that existing? Is that gonna be...
Well, that's almost like first come, first served, you know, that's the project that's before the planning board. They're applying for an access, so then you would have one access.
And there'd be one more, one more go.
Then, yeah.
Well, the question becomes, would they be within 500 feet of the road? And when we set this, whatever the number is, fill in your X, Katie, we potentially could make that access point unviable, I don't know, 500 feet. I guess it's a football field and a half. So I'm just trying to envision whether that would preclude...
Will we say any new access points?
Okay, that's already existing, okay.
So another wrinkle to all of this is that...
So I added new to that, and I'm confused. So we're counting gorillas in the distance determination, even though they're not legally?
Which gorillas?
I'm just saying in theory.
Social trails.
Yeah, I know, but which one?
The Little Pizza.
So when we say any new, are we saying any new legal ones? Or any new at all irrespective of their status?
We could only acknowledge legal ones.
Yeah, we can't acknowledge guerrilla ones at all.
Right, okay, I just want to be clear.
Right.
Well, if there is a guerrilla one, we really need to call the land trust and say, please send that letter. And then if they don't fix it, then our building inspector...
Okay, so you're gonna have a conversation with Christie about the gorillas.
Yeah.
That was a very funny, taken out of context quote, but we'll quote that.
Oh, right. Okay, so here's another wrinkle with these access points. Why am I drawing a blank on the gentleman who was at a recent workshop, who's got a property in this zone? Casano, Rich Casano, right. So he sent me a note, and he said, let's talk about the easement that the village and I worked on in the past, because there's already a connection. And I was like, Rich, if there is, can you please send me the paper?
Did he?
No.
Okay, so we need to find out about that.
A connection with the rail trail?
Yeah.
On his property, there's, yeah.
That would mean he has to cross Trip 13, which is a stream with stream buffers that are required.
Yes, that was mentioned as well.
30 feet on either side of the stream.
Additional wrinkle on top of the wrinkle.
So that would be like... So that would be like a pretty big bridge?
Yeah.
So you, so you really have, you have Bosse's, you have Rich Casano's, and you have...
Bosse's already has a gorilla trail.
The proposed Zero, it has a gorilla, but it's well-loved.
Yeah, it's a nice gorilla. Boski.
Maybe, I'm just throwing this out there, but maybe three is the number. Because I get, you know, there's like a neighbor who lives on Bonneville View Road neighborhood, and she's always like, "You guys need to create a connection to the, to the rail trail across the street from my street." I don't know, how do we do that? You know, people like these, these connections. But we also don't want to have too many either.
That would be like Agway in the car wash.
Well, that would, yeah, be kind of like Casano's or Agway or... You know, the, the area between Broadhead and Huguenot is pretty long. I don't know.
Maybe three is the magic number for that spot.
Well, and again, we just keep going back to the same thing. It depends on whether we count the social trails or gorillas or not. Because what does three, what does three mean? You know?
Right.
Well, but I think the point is, so that's why we have to deal with that with the land trust, because legally in our code and legally just generally, we can only recognize what is legally...
So if we recognize three, and then we have the informal ones, would we have six? You know?
We would, because we can't, we have to pretend they don't exist in these decisions, because they don't.
Maybe the land trust attorney can help us with this. If we say, like, "The gorilla at Bosse's", you know, that exists, that's not legal, but it's...
We want to use the term "social trail" in order to stand...
I think we're all enjoying getting to use the word gorilla.
I know, particularly in the last couple of days in front of the lobby.
Simple pleasures.
We have gorillas in the mist, you know?
I guess we could ask the rail trail to just shut them for some...
Let's, let's, let's see what they say. Because they do, they administer CE.
Do you want to formalize these? Do you want to shut them down? Do you want to make them bigger?
Because we need to make rules, and we don't know how to make the rules with this stuff.
It would be great, it would be great if it existed, and we were all comfortable with the idea of formalizing it, and then basically allowing that property owner to formalize it. That would help us with this number. So let's, I have, I have a meeting penciled with those guys. I'll ask them that question.
And you'll follow up with Rich to say, "Hey, do you still need that CE stuff?"
Well, I sent him one email.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, you do that. That'd be great.
I'd like to make a comment about the numbering and lettering of the clauses.
Yeah, we're, we're just failing on that until we get the content. And then I'm literally, I'm going to punt it to the lawyer and say, "Can you clean this up?"
Good, because...
"Don't worry about it." I had to know, like, on the first page.
What happened was, we were trying to keep it parallel to the old ordinance, so you could see the changes. But the numbers went, like, the fluid, because this...
Yeah, I gave up early on that.
Yeah.
So let's just focus on content.
Yeah, so I realize that's a problem.
Yes.
And thank you for noting that, and also adjusting a couple of things where there were a couple of missing words, like "public" in front of transit and, you know. No matter how many times you look at something, there's always something that slips through. But yeah, the numbers have to be totally redone and done in a rational way. And I'm sure the lawyer can figure out how to do that.
KT, remember that, remember that big list that you had? Not big list, I think it was, I'm guessing, like, eight items. And it was like parking, rooftops, rail trail connections, number of stories, like...
I think it was...
Do you have that?
I, I have it embedded in my head, and I went through it again just before we started talking. It was parking, rooftops, height, rail trail, and design standards.
Yeah, so let's talk about design standards.
There might be another one in here somewhere, but I think not.
So...
I thought we did, so, in our first workshop meeting, we went over the proposed design standard language, and I was generally comfortable with it. There were a couple of tweaks that we kind of made some adjustments to, which I think is in this draft.
So were you saying, KT, that if there's some design standards missing in the redline document, that they, that would mean that because you couldn't access the Word document to find them, or put those visuals in there?
Yeah, I didn't, I, there's no visuals in the Word doc that Tim and I were working on, because...
Because I also thought we were pretty much in consensus on the design standards, and we were all pretty happy with it. Yeah, we made a couple of tweaks.
Yeah, you all maybe, I think they're dated. I think that, I'm usually all about relying on other documents, but our master plan is so old that I think that...
That may be true, but legally, a zoning ordinance has to be based on a comprehensive plan.
Right.
Until you have a new comprehensive plan.
Right, but we're not tied to using the design standards in that comprehensive plan, are we?
Well, we adopted some, we adjusted some things in, for example, the building materials. And that was with the input from Floyd Niffen and from, from Michael Zilla in terms of needing more specific building standards to explain to potential developers what they were looking for.
I think we were largely good, maybe except for KT, with the design standards.
That's what I had thought.
And we, as a group, we, we like massaged a couple of concepts that we thought were a little bit better based on our suggestions, but I don't feel like we needed to do a whole lot.
Yeah, I mean, you can see in my notes, I don't want it to hold up the process. And I'm hopeful that when we get the money to do a joint master plan with the town, that we can address and update everything, not just our design standards.
Well, the last master plan took three and a half years, so don't...
I'm not saying it's going to happen overnight. I'm saying that I don't want my concerns about design standards to hold up this process.
We have all this, we have...
Then I'm hopeful that we do it then. Yeah, I mean, it all just seems very Victorian and traditional to me. And I, I'm just have much more eclectic taste, I guess.
And I thought we made some adjustments to reflect some of that eclectic taste in this.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll take another pass and see if there's any more tweaks before the next one.
I think there was a problem with like number six, materials, colors, and textures of buildings.
Yeah, we talked a bit about that.
In general, natural materials in general are preferred. That's not, that's just such suggestion. It's not, you know, a hard definition.
Yeah, see, I, I don't think all buildings need to be the same height. I don't even care if your windows are symmetrical. I mean, I may just have, I mean, it's subjective, right? It just, you know. I'm the same person, everybody keeps, you know, when they complain to me about a certain building on Main Street that they hate it, I'm like, "I don't hate it." I don't hate it.
Okay, and you're, you're comfortable with the split streets?
Yeah, but unfortunately, DOT won't go for that.
Oh.
Yeah, I heard about that, yeah. Which is very problematic, because...
It's super problematic, because you guys built it into the whole streetscape for the zone.
Mm-hmm, and we based that on the adjustments that the Zero Place developer made in order to make the bike path accessible in that key linkage for the Empire Trail work. You know?
I was very, very, very unhappy when I heard about that.
Is there some way we can get to the same place outside of the zone? I'm just throwing it out there. Is there, is there some local law that we can pass? Is there some, and I'm just, this is just verbal diarrhea.
It's just state, state DOT said that they don't like that idea of sidewalk, bike, car, street. They will only do the conventional sidewalk, parking, shoulder, street.
And, you know, I got this right from the up-to-date NET Coast standards. That's the National Association of City Transportation.
And DOT was like, "We don't have this anywhere else in New York State, except for New York City, and we're not going to, we're not going to, you know, do something new here."
So then only, not only would not support it, they would not approve it?
Yeah, well, they, it was, it was what was proposed.
The whole streetscape for Zero, Zero Place was, was this. So then you all said, "This is awesome, let's do it in the whole corridor."
Yeah, it protects the...
And then DOT came back and said, I mean, I, sorry, but this is an example of, you know, broadly...
Well, it's a problem that you're...
Best practices at certain levels. Government is way behind.
Well, if you're too far ahead of the curve, then there are problems. So that's another, you know, great flag.
So what are they doing with Zero Place now?
They're doing the conventional sidewalk, car, shoulder, street.
I guess there's no other alternative, right?
The other alternative is to have a bike bridge over Trip 13 and access things that way. That was our other option. You know, at least from the norm.
Is it parallel parking in front, or is it slanted?
It's parallel.
So the poor old bicyclists are going to be bowed down.
Well, that's not what we're trying to do.
And there's no way to push back against DOT, right? There's no appeal or, I mean, it's a done deal, right?
And it seems like the, whatever we call it this week, Connecticut to Ridge, the bicycle, you know, project is a state initiative.
The Empire Trail, yeah. It's on a lot of money.
Yeah, I wonder, look into what KESM is doing with its complete streets policy, because they've got $10 million to play with. And I know they just had a bunch of meetings about their complete streets policy. So I wonder if they have some kind of wrinkles that they're doing up there.
So I wonder if that's not the pushback. They don't have this anywhere in New York State beyond New York City. But we don't have an Empire State Trail that encourages bicycle use anywhere in the state currently. And you guys are the ones who are promoting it in New York State. You know, help us out here. It's a new, it's a new circumstance.
I don't know what that actual, so what does that actually look like? Is it petitioning DOT? Is it going to Kevin Cahill and Bonnusac and say, "Help us with this"?
Well, the guy who sent, the guy who sent notice to me on Front Cross Walks is in charge of safety for the DOT region. That might be a good, good place to start.
Which guy?
I have his name on my office. If you send it, I might recognize it.
Are they in the Poughkeepsie office or...
I used to know the guy that retired, right? He, he was in the policy.
He was a 518 number. Again, I talked to him like four weeks ago, and it's at my office.
No, that's all...
Yeah, 518 is...
So you, are you okay with these diagrams? Or you just couldn't access them because I sent you a PDF?
Yeah, we just didn't have, because it was...
Oh, okay, that's...
We just need the word.
I don't dig the design standards, but I'm, I'm the misfit toy on that right now, so...
Well, and I think, I think the current planning board chair did have a lot of input into that, for what that's worth.
And I just feel like any design standards is a step in the right direction.
These are just suggestions, because...
Can you tell me why we didn't find it? I know you're going to, I'm afraid to even say it out loud. I'm not going to look at you, but why didn't we not go with the form-based code? Then, see, I didn't look at Tim, I looked at you.
Because it's too complicated.
I love how really, really smart people try to explain form-based.
I don't even know what it is. I just know from the, you know, mucky-muck planners, that's what they say you should do.
Well, yeah, form-based codes. We, we did our own special version of form-based codes. This is not a form-based code.
I know it's not. I'm asking why.
And I'm, because I knew it would be a bridge too far.
Okay.
So what we did was look at what the key issues are. We looked at best practices. We said, "How can we take this and with minimal changes make it workable without it being too confusing?" And for example, for code-based zoning, you'd have to have diagrams as to where you put a building on a lot and, you know, how do you have...
It's very site-specific and complicated.
It's very site-specific. And at least in the southern part of the zone, the sites we have are so weirdly shaped, and we'd be doing it for too few places. So the, the other big question, the other big, large animal in the room, not a gorilla, is the idea of not changing the name of this to something new. In other words, keeping the NBR as a name. That makes for so much confusion, because this is a different kind of code from the one before. So it'll just make for so many confusing situations, unless you call it a different name.
I would argue the opposite, is that we're, we're modifying what we did, and we're still on this journey to the best NBR.
So what about the piece of the zone that's in the northeast corner that has partial lots? Is that going to be...
I think we were deciding...
We're going to kick that out.
Yeah, and that was early.
Okay, so that goes back to R1.
Yeah.
And you want the whole...
Is it R1?
I thought it was R3.
No, it's not R3, it's R1. I'm almost...
But whatever it is, it's not NBR.
It's residential, though, and it's those weird...
So that'll have to be another code change, right?
Right, well, one, yes, as we define...
But that's still in the works, or will be in the works.
Yep.
Let me try and group this up here. What if we call it NBR 2.0? We give some sort of designation in the, in the title that it's, it's the second version or the, you know, improved version or, you know, just a, just a thought. I'm trying to, how do we keep the, keep the name but change the name? So that's...
Because you see, the name, Neighborhood Business Residential, is that what it is? Is a mashup of two conflicting districts. What we have is a mixed-use residential district. That's the planning term that should be applied to it. NBR was a crazy term that, you know, is not used many places.
Yeah, but it's what's familiar in our community at this point. I don't know, I don't wanna fight about naming. It seems kinda, I think it's more.
I think part of the reason why we looked at adding the M U R is because we were looking at having a northern and a section section and we wanted to break off and differentiate. If we're not gonna do that, then, you know, N B R could work for the whole thing, just to keep it consistent.
And we are in agreement that we're not gonna do that, right? Or is that still hanging out there?
I like the idea of keeping it all one because I think you want to.
You can keep it all one and change its name.
I wouldn't say we're in agreement, but I do feel there was a consensus against having two different.
I think we wanna encourage those properties north of trip thirteen to get off of private subject.
Okay, but you could still call it M U R instead of N B R.
I don't think changing the name really helps us. Like, it, a brand has been created, people are somewhat familiar with it. I think if we change it, it just makes it confusing again. And the spirit of the zone is not really changed, it's just mixed-use multi-story.
Okay.
You know, the most material thing that we've changed really is the, you know, three-stories from four.
And putting in some more guidelines in terms of what people can do because before it was.
Right, but the concept hasn't changed. The goal hasn't changed.
Yeah, but the guidelines are much stronger so that people know what might be acceptable.
Right.
But we still need the guidelines, though.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Now we've got more guidelines.
Yeah, but where are they?
Well, like the roof deck guidelines, that's what I'm talking about, right? You've, you've come to some agreement about the guidelines that you're going to put into the new version of the N B R, like roof decks with conditions.
I thought we were talking about like permitted use for types of businesses.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about, I was talking about the name business. Now I'm saying that this is an improvement on what we had before because there weren't any like specific.
It brings clarity in multiple places and it, it addresses some of the issues that we've experienced since one point oh.
The new and improved N B R.
Now with three stories.
Order now of the shift by business.
That's right.
Um, so I, I can go through this draft and put in everything that we've discussed and I will also try to highlight the places where perhaps we're not at consensus yet.
Great.
If I do not interpret where we are or not, everybody should go through it so we know exactly where our decision points that we need to vote for or against and are we like, think we could do that at our next meeting?
The twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
That's because that's not for a while.
It's a good plan, but.
Is there anything popping out at this moment in time that people think we still need to talk about?
Obviously parking, but that's, that's.
Right, that is definitely yes. Well, yeah, I guess we need to get, so what am I putting in?
We need to get.
Some of the places I don't know what to put.
We need guidance from a rail trail in terms of the access points. I think we've pretty much come to consensus on roof decks.
Yep.
Parking still needs to be discussed and design standards seems to be good with everyone. I think those were the.
Okay, so if I don't know exactly what to put in, I'll just mark it as T V D or, but we should all come to the table for the, on those things, knowing what we think we were at, we are at.
Another issue if we're dealing with the, the zone as a whole, is there really needs to be some mention of the stream protection guidelines. That is part of the overall code, but.
Well, our overall code is twenty feet. Do we wanna make it more restrictive?
I think it's thirty feet.
It's twenty because I live next to the stream.
Oh, okay.
I wish it was thirty.
It should be thirty. That's the best practices time.
I think the twenty was what was negotiated at the time. If we have votes for thirty, I would be on board with that.
Twenty is pretty, twenty is pretty tight.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of a forty?
If you look at the suggestions that we made in the document that accompanied this red line thing, I think this, there's a string protection item in there.
So if I search, it's in here?
No, no, it's not in, there were two documents, the red line thing.
And the narrative?
And the narrative, so I'll find the narrative.
All right, now I just need to find, maybe you can let me know where you think in here would be appropriate.
Right. And then the other thing that I think was raised about the northern area was the possibility of maybe adding some other uses like a incubator.
That's a great endpoint.
So possibility or.
Well, I think, so basically what you're saying is then, then the northern of those properties could be just office only. That's essentially what you're saying.
No, office or some incubator research type facility.
Yeah, that's office, no.
So there is actually, you know, if you look on page two, under six is prohibited uses and then another six is site development standards and then six A two.
Which, which page are you on?
Two, right here. Um, it basically says, "All newly constructed buildings in the N B R district must be multi-story except when site conditions do not permit the safer legally compliant construction of a multi-story building or," and I had questions about this, "for the construction of not-for-profit cultural facilities." And then my note that I put in there was this idea, which I understand came from Michael Zeiler, is like, "Well, what if we get a big employer? What do we get a use that we, you know, isn't multi-use but would be really good use of that space?" I think that is where we would put this.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't even know what not-for-profit cultural facilities means.
I do, because I was there when that was discussed and, and like, the thinking was, like, what if, you know, Frank Getty is gonna be used and we're gonna build some sort of cool museum? That's what that was.
Okay, it's just a pretty broad thing. I'm not against it. And I just wrote after not-for-profit cultural facilities or for a for-profit business that will provide X number of jobs, question mark, or, and then also maybe, you know, if somebody promises to do something like rock star lead gold or something really green. I, I mean, this is the place to put in the exceptions, right?
I think those are good exceptions.
I don't have the language, you know, these are just concepts, but.
Yeah, yeah, good concepts.
You know, I, I would like to take account for if there were some large employer because, you know, to kick it back to parking and trying to get everyone out of their cars, if we don't have more places for people to work in our community, people are gonna be driving from the car to this. So if we, so I would like to have some sort of contingency in there for if someone's gonna be bringing a large portion of, a large number of jobs in the community.
Yeah, that's great. I like it too.
But do we literally in the code, like, say X number of jobs or can we be as vague as large employer?
I think you could say for-profit business that will provide.
Local employment.
Local employment. I think that's mine.
But that could be, yeah.
That could be two employees.
You need a, you need a sense of scale.
Significant.
Material. But even that's bullshit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, you wanna have language that's sufficiently inclusive and not exclusive.
Right.
And then you can negotiate once the proposal comes to you.
Above average.
Everyone's above average in this community.
I don't know, perhaps in the whole economic development world, there's some language that we can steal, that there's actually a category for large employers, you know? Like, what is the definition of a small business?
Right.
To my mind.
It doesn't end, well, also, it would be really nice, but I think that was the incubator idea. What if you had a collection of small businesses?
Right, there's that as well.
So I think it can be, I think it should just be like that, you know, there, there should be a provision for something that's, or if it's exclusively office space and keep it, keep it fake. Because we would have, you know, that's what Dennis is saying, like, it would be great if we had an employer or employers.
I don't know, maybe, all right, I'll look in the economics, the moral, and I'll also ask Will, maybe Will asks about that.
That is definitely a need in New Pauls, it's like we need higher quality office space in addition to residential.
What about the, the green idea? Like, if you're super green, you get to do whatever you want.
No.
Okay, so.
First of all, the lead standards are not really that.
I, I, I know. I was just trying to get at the idea for me.
Don't get me started.
I, I, I'm totally there. I, I was just trying to get the concept.
Everything's gotta be pretty green at this point with.
Well, how about, um, you have a net zero footprint or you have a net?
You, you really want the jobs.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Because that's gonna be a net increase in all kinds of ways.
I want the jobs in a green building is what I want, um, but yeah.
You want green jobs in a green building.
I personally struggle with the concept of net zero buildings when you don't know what businesses are gonna, gonna be contained within them.
Well, we're not gonna know and then either of these could be, you know, a real company if we just say large employer.
Shells coming to the house.
I think it should, also.
There are constraints in that northern area, though. Be aware that there's a lot of wetland and flood fringe and so.
Low elevation.
Yep.
Well, it's flood fringe, so.
Six A one does give some room for that where it's saying, you know, it does not permit the safer legally compliant construction of a multi-story building if it's too flood plain and maybe there's an exception or.
But you can, you can elevate those.
So really, six A one is like you can do anything if you want.
I, I would just change where it says for-profit, just say office space.
Instead of business?
It could be non-for-profit, for-profit, yeah.
But what if it's a whole manufacturer or something that makes.
Things with three D printers.
Green stuff. It could be manufacturing. It could be high-tech and not be office.
You could say officer commercial space.
Yeah, officer commercial. Job generating officer commercial space.
Sure.
Good, I'd love to have something in front of job creating that, that requires something that have more than two jobs, you know what I mean? We just said, so we'll, we'll think on that.
I'll do a little bit.
Might just be tightened up a little bit or loosened up, whatever.
Okay. Oh, by the way, K T, Complete Streets was passed the seventh, twenty thirteen, seven twenty-four. This is, this seems to be hyperbole, but you might like it.
This is pushback to DOT here, what is the consensus?
This is New Pauls, huh?
This is just.
Oh, in two thousand and thirteen, yeah. And I think the town passed it a while ago as well. Well, we can pass it all we want if the state doesn't let us do it.
Well.
Not that, not that we're gonna give up without height.
We could do it on our streets.
You just can't.
Right, that's true.
The suggestion was they wanted to lower the local miles per hour to twenty-five, but you can't, you can't do that without asking the New York State Legislature. But yeah, uplifting pros.
Okay, so can we jump on to our next topic?
Yes.
So we definitely need to do the homework. I, I'll do my homework, I'll give it to everybody and everybody should come knowing where they stand on each thing and everybody should tell me if I missed or misinterpreted anything ahead of time. I'll try to do it.
And I'll send you the doc X, what else was I gonna send you?
I don't know, I'll let you know.
Is it, um, do you think it's reasonable that you would be able to get that, any homework to us on a Thursday before the meeting?
Yes.
Cool.
I hope to do it well, so that you can kick back to me before that.
So can we move on to Milbrook Preserve?
Please.
So we have the rec plan and the M O A. What I would like to do tonight, what I would like to do tonight is.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Is to, is to get this M O A off our desk because I think we're super close with this thing. Both our planner and our attorney have looked at it. Our planner made a couple of suggestions that I would think that the Milbrook Preserve Inc. folks would be fine with. Um, so does everyone have the planner's memo in front of us, that we had in the last meeting?
Yeah, I dropped my car off and all my information's in a folder I have.
Okay, so, so in David's memo, he's got section one A and he's referring to, the M O A should reference the two thousand and fifteen M O A. So I think what he's just trying to do there is he's just trying to connect it to that M O A, which I spoke with Will about it today and I've been feeling this for a long time, like, we should basically agree with the town to, to get rid of that M O A because what that essentially says is that the village is responsible for maintenance of the town and village-owned Milbrook Preserve and this M O A is superseding that two thousand and fifteen M O A. So I, I think we should just remove, you know, David's suggesting that we reference that in this M O A. I'm suggesting we do not reference it and we just separately agree with the town to get rid of it. And David is suggesting that we do reference in this M O A the, the C F A award that we received in December of sixteen for about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars because that's, that's a big part of what we're, we're trying to do here and then I'll, I'll tie that into the rec plan in a second. So that was his suggestion to be added to the M O A. The other thing that he was mentioning that I think is worthwhile is one B and he has this underlying language where it just says construction, operation and maintenance. So we could ask Milbrook Preserve Inc. if they're comfortable with that addition. And it was really, um, so then C and D I think are, are straightforward, uh, yeah, I would.
I didn't have any notes on it.
Yeah, but I would, I would, I, I can't anticipate, or I couldn't imagine that Inc. would have a problem with C or D. They seem pretty straightforward. And then, I'm sorry, yes, C or D. And then E is just one that's saying, um, it would be good to have like categories of exempt activities and he was talking about like cleanups or, or general maintenance, like, it would probably make a whole lot of sense if Milbrook Preserve Inc. or the village, like, if there was general maintenance that needed to be done, that you didn't need to have approval by the land trust because that's the way this thing currently reads. So even work with the land trust and say, "Hey, you know, here are some categories of things that we want you to basically approve in advance." Um, so let's ask, I, I'm in agreement with David that we should ask the land trust to give us like a few examples, you know, and that's not a deal breaker at all. If I say, "No, we still want to approve everything," we'll be like, "Fine, but let's just move forward with this document." But those were the, those were the topics regarding this M O A. I would like to, you know, send these back to the land trust and Milbrook Preserve Inc. can say, "Let's make these tweaks and, and let's sign this M O A as soon as possible."
Yeah, and the attorney was good with the M O A, um, it, with, with the things that David suggested.
Go back to page one on the one U B. The underlying part.
That's what he's saying should be added.
Right. And is that, is this, will this be news to Milbrook Preserve Incorporated or is this something that's been discussed already or?
No, this, we will ask them if they will be fine including that language.
Okay, all right. Okay, we don't know whether they'll be fine or they're not.
We do not know.
Okay, good.
It's in line with what the C D says, though, so it's not conceptually new.
Just like, like in one D where this just feels like a, like just a way of doing business, like if there's construction plans, um, you know, copies need to be transmitted to, you know, various village personnel like clerk, D P W, planner, blah, 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 you know? So some of it's just like logistical stuff, which I imagine they'll be fine with.
I don't think any of it changes what either side's expectations of responsibilities are.
So let me, let me jump to the, to the rec plan and I, I think to summarize what's going on here with, with David's next two and a half pages regarding the rec plan, basically a requirement to get the C F A money is we have to have a seeker process and we could, for lack of a, a better idiom, we could kill two birds with one stone and do seeker for everything that's in our C F A and then include some of the other plans that are in this rec plan. So, you know, then we don't run into the problem of like segmentation in the future. Milbrook Preserve Inc. might say, "Oh, well, we would prefer not to do that because that might slow us up a little bit in terms of this rec plan." But then again, we kinda have to do it anyways to be compliant with the C F A process. So.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I like that idea of like, let's just take everything we have to do for the C F A plus any of the other stuff that Milbrook Preserve Inc. is doing, you know, put it all in one basket and do seeker for it. So then it's like, that's one and done. And then that is the rec plan.
When I first saw Tim Kenetast, I immediately picked up the phone and I was like, "We need to do seeker for this?" And then he explained to me the idea of packaging it with the C F A grant that we have to do our anyway. And then actually, as I read the rec plan, I felt like I would feel better about it if it did go through seeker. So even though, so I think that if we can say to, um, Milbrook Inc., you know, we're so close to M O A and we can, we can finalize that, but this process might take a little bit longer, but it will strengthen it and make this process, um, really, it needs to unfold in a certain way and I'm, I'm agreeing with the planner that combining it and doing the seeker together would be a good thing. There's a lot of impacts in this recreation plan and a lot of them are not clearly defined and I understand that some of that is because some things are just unknown, but I think it will only make it a better document if it goes through that process and we look at that. I mean, as somebody that was involved for a long time in watching and helping this Milbrook thing, you know, we've always had this intention of low impact and light footprint and I get that in the rec plan, we have to put all the different things that could be possible. There's a long list of things, nature center, restrooms, parking, you know, these are, these are, if all of these things happen, it's not gonna be a low, a low-impact, light footprint. It's gonna be like, you know, a, a national park. Um, and in some ways that would be a great thing, but in other ways, I, I just feel and I, we don't have crystal balls to know that all these things are gonna happen and which are and which aren't, except for the trails. We know the trails and the signage are gonna happen. Um, but I just think that, I think it makes sense to go to, through seeker for those, for those reasons because there are so many potential impacts.
Thanks for being.
And what I like about this too is we can get one thing off our desk. We can get this M O A off our desk and Milbrook Preserve Inc. can feel good that, you know, we, we've created a document that we can both sign and it will be an example of momentum, which I think we all want. And then, you know, we'll get their thoughts on this idea of putting all of the plans in one basket and then pursuing seeker. Because I, I think that will actually help Milbrook Preserve Inc. too as they, you know, seek to do some of those other projects, you know, they'll be able to say, "Well, it's already been vetted."
Okay.
All right, so I, I think that, that's, you know, this memo from David was pretty useful. All right, so I think that's, you know, this memo from David was pretty useful. Do we want to, since the MOA changes were pretty straightforward? Well, actually, it's fine. We'll just send this, I'll just send these couple of items to Milbrook Preserve Inc. and land trust and see how they respond. And then hopefully, we'll have an updated document that we can move forward with. All right, I want to move to the next topic, security deposit.
So, if I may. In thinking about this, I took a step back to figure out why, to kind of back to basics as we're close to, you know, saying we're ready to go to public hearing. I gave a little bit of thought of, like, how we got to where we are now. You know, we identified a problem and a remedy. The problem we identified was that security deposits were too easy to withhold. Seventy percent of our housing units are rentals. Our renters are mobile and transient. Residents, tenants, as such, often don't have budgets that can easily cover first month, last month, required of a new place unless security deposits are recovered quickly. And we know anecdotally that tenants often don't fight when they get, when they don't get all their deposits back because they don't have the money, the time, the wherewithal to go to court. So I think, you know, we're all in agreement that this is the issue and the problem. And one of the remedies, just one of the remedies, is to change the law to make it so it's not so easy for landlords to withhold security deposits. And the stuff that the landlord tenant council is doing on public education and guidebooks and making sure both sets, tenants and landlords, know about things like best practices and everything from, you know, taking pictures and documenting what it looks like before and after for both parties is helpful. So I think it's important that we're clear with the public that this law is not going to fix all of the problems. It's just hopefully going to make it less easy for landlords to withhold security deposits and empower tenants who don't get security deposits back either fully or partially to have, you know, a cleaner, better route to getting their money back. So we talked a lot about the different ways that we could do this with the law. At this point in time, this law shortens the window in which deposits need to be returned from 30 days to 21 days. It's New York State law, 30 days. We're making the argument with this law because we have this mobile and transient population that 21 days is reasonable, defensible, and doable. Our attorney's office did lots of research to see if 21 days was defensible. So there's the time element, right? So we're making it shorter, good thing. And it also confirms, secondly, that the burden of proof is on landlords when they don't give security deposits back and requires, and I'll talk a little bit about this more in a minute, solid evidence of the costs, which are, you know, the evidence that money needs to be withheld. This law currently allows the judge to award up to triple the amount wrongfully withheld and allows the judge to consider past practices of the landlord in determination of how much these damages should be. This law doesn't include, as was in a previous version, an automatic payment when the deadline is missed. So in other words, if you hit 21 days, an earlier version was you automatically have to pay 25% and each week was 25% more. In our conversations, we've come back to, no, let's give the courts and actually the judges more power and instead of it just being an automatic thing, they can take, you know, into account the case specifics, right? So if you do an automatic, you know, if you don't hit the deadline, it doesn't matter what the details are, right? It's like, you didn't hit it and that's pretty severe, right? And we took that out and I just want to make sure that we agree that we should keep that approach out. And now, so I just want to reiterate, as I do every time, that this law is not going to address instances where there was wrongful retention of deposits, when tenants don't have the wherewithal or the resources to go to court. However, our intent here, I think, is that not just to change court outcomes because my analysis of the court data is that the courts, you know, don't have an institutional bias, that we saw mixed results. You know, a chunk of time, it favors, the outcome favors the tenant. A chunk of time, it favors the landlords and the rest is somewhere in between the two. But, and the law, I hope, will help tenants in the courts, but I think it's also our intent to change the culture by knowing that the courts are going to be a route that people can take, right? So it's not like we think that it's just going to address the people that get to courts. The hope is that indirectly, less people need to go to the court because this will push behavior change by both parties, right, to act responsibly. So we have less cases like this. Am I making sense?
Yeah.
I'm saying a lot. And obviously, again, it's, we can't craft a law that can address the fact that New York State law says that if you, if the landlord's business address is outside of Newport, then the case needs to be in that municipality. So if the landlord's LLC address is in Buffalo, then that's where it has to be. And according to our attorney, that would be a very, very big heavy lift and ask of New York State to change that because you can ask him to go on about it more. But basically, that's not, that's something that is going to be very tough to change. So we're never going to be able to deal with the cases that have to be tried outside of our borders. So this version also adds, this version, which is based on Ithaca's law, which has been held up by case law, we added in a definition of surrender of premises and termination of tenancy. So we would have clarity on those things because we heard that we needed clarity on those things in earlier public hearings. I did call the attorney again today because of my concerns about just making sure that part about the language which affects what type of documentation a landlord has to provide in the courts. It currently says under 12949, "a good faith effort to estimate or has properly documented," open paren, e.g. with receipts and invoices, closed paren, the amounts, blah, blah, blah. I had a long conversation with him because anecdotally, I hear that in our, in the courts, tenants need, what am I trying to say? I don't know, "good faith" just sounded too vague to me, right? Like, I wanted it to have more teeth. Like, I wanted some kind of documentation with recommend, like, I know that it's not going to always be receipts and invoices. I don't know. And then Will said, I think that this is enough. I think this is what we should go with for now. He did say on that section, we can get rid of the little phrase or the two words "effort to estimate" and just make it a "good faith estimate." There's another reference under 12948 where it just says a "good faith estimate of the cost." And he also actually said to me, you know, by the time it gets to the courts, they should be able to actually have the work done. So they may not know, we've heard a lot about, we've heard a few landlords saying, well, I can't figure it out in that short time. But he's like, in terms of when it gets to the court, you know, they've probably already made any repairs because they need to turn over these places to get new people in. And there is a delay in the courts. So I guess I'm saying right now that I'm satisfied with that language. But I'm still sort of concerned and I hope that it, you know, we do, we do say in this law, there's a section, burden of proof, that stands on its own, that the landlord bears the burden of proving. I don't know.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just picking this through. So let's say a landlord withheld security deposit. And it's like, six weeks later, so then you call them out in violation of this law and you pursue a legal action against them. So then, they get the notice that you're pursuing an action against them. So then they're like, oh, no, here's your security deposit back. So then, there's no slap on the wrist at all, right? Because if they were to go to court-
Yeah, not enough.
If they were to go to court, then the judge will say, well, you violated the 21-day rule, but at week seven, you did give them the full security deposit back.
Right, I don't know if he then, I don't know, I don't know what that, how that process is. I do know that when I looked at, you know, things do get settled. Things do get dismissed. There were five out of the 31 that were claims withdrawn. But I don't think any of those scenarios-
So we've just eliminated any penalty for violating, you know, this line of the statute?
Well, that's the automatic thing, right? Do we want to, irrespective of anything that happens after 21 days, have a penalty? At this point, with this version of the law, it's all left up to the judge. So if, you're right, if they pay, as is, if they pay before they get to court, I guess then the tenant just withdraws the suit. I don't know what the legal language is for it, but yeah. Which is, which is why, in the original draft, we had for each day after the expiration of the initial, we had 14 before, initial, it would now be 21-day period following surrender of leased space. Landlord wrongfully fails to return the security deposit or deliver an itemized statement. So it wasn't just, we said, you got to at least say why. It wasn't so, because that is also- The penalty was for not having some type, not resolution, but some action in 21 days.
Well, rather than a penalty for each day or each week or each period of time, how about a one-time penalty to address what you're concerned about reasonably? That any security deposit returned after the 21-day period will need to be 115% of the original deposit, whatever the number is. Just have a one-time thing rather than escalating. That would be standard across the board. It wouldn't really affect the judge's ability to do additional things. It'd be some pain. It may not be the graduating, you know, it means if you waited six weeks, you waited six months.
I'd say 115?
115%, and I just pulled it out of the air.
But I just want, the way we had it before and I think the way we'd have to do it is is fails to return the security deposit or deliver an itemized statement, detailed reasons for withholding all or a portion of the deposit. So you basically would get a penalty if you didn't take action to notify, either by giving it back or by saying why you're not giving it back. I like what you're proposing. I don't know what the amounts are.
Maybe you just say up to and then that percent, whatever that is. So still, we're given the judge latitude to understand that-
I think we're giving the judge latitude to award treble damages even if the money is returned on the 22nd day because it says, let's see. Should the landlord, within the aforementioned 21-day period, fail to return the entire security deposit or fail to provide the aforementioned written statement specifying the retention or all portion of the deposit accompanied by full payment, it should be presumed that the landlord is willfully and without good cause retaining the security deposit. And earlier, it says that treble damages can be awarded if they are willfully, if they're retaining the security deposit without good cause. So if they owe, if it's not in that 21-day period, it is not in good cause and it can still be taken to court. That's the way I'm reading it.
Right.
Now, is someone really going to take it to, I'm sorry, if you live in the-
Yes, sorry.
If someone really going to take it to court when they got their money back? I don't know. It's still got the option and the judge still has the option. I think I'd prefer to have just some sort of straight-up penalty to make sure that it's not so easy for a landlord to say, oh, well, it was the 23rd day, don't worry about it.
That's why in that example that I gave, like, it was like, weeks later. And then because they sensed that you were going to end up in court, they're like, oh, here's your security deposit back.
Right. This, if they're still taking them to court because it was past that 21 days, so it is not in good faith and treble damages can still be awarded.
Based on the wording we have?
Right. And especially since the judge has the ability to consider past practices of landlord returning other security deposits. If there's a landlord making habit of waiting six weeks or seven weeks and just paying it if they get taken to court, someone continues their court action because it's past 21 days, then there's actually a record of that. There's a history and then the judge can do something about it.
And that's just verbatim from Ithaca, right?
Yeah, not the penalty part. But yeah, this is verbatim from Ithaca.
No, I thought the treble damages was.
The treble, yes, this, this is, yeah, I think we did slight alterations, but substantively changed this. We tried to not change it as much as possible. But yeah, so, just so I understand what we're saying. So I do agree that if somebody gives it back on the 23rd day, then the tenant is less likely to show up in court. And if the tenant doesn't show up in court, then there's not going to be a route for the judge to award those treble damages because it gets thrown out, right? So I don't think we should leave that scenario up if we think that there should be an automatic penalty. And if there is an automatic penalty, we should use this language that it has to be a security deposit or deliver an itemized statement with the reasons for withholding. We just need to say what we want that penalty to be. But I still don't understand, I guess, what can trigger that if the tenant doesn't show up to court? If they resolve it and the tenant doesn't show up. Do you know what I'm saying? It's not like a fine. It's not like you didn't pay and, you know, put your money in the parking meter and you get sent a fine. This is, this is sort of built into it that both parties have to show up.
We're creating a system that people have the ability to hold landlords accountable, but we can't make them hold them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. I'm just wondering, is there a scenario where it could be a fine?
I'm thinking of the scenario where you rightfully should get your security deposit back. You're not getting it back. There's a lot of stuff that goes on. And then, weeks and weeks later, they're like, giving it to you. And it's just like, yeah, but I just endured all this headache. There should be a penalty for making someone endure a big headache.
Not even headache.
I think we agree that there should be a penalty.
If somebody used that money to move into the next location they're moving to, they could be couch-surfing for weeks before they get that opportunity. You know, I just, I want to create a system that's going to motivate landlords as much as possible. I think the language here, people have the ability, if it's that 22nd day, they can still bring them to court. What the judge is going to do, I don't know. We don't have a way of knowing.
As long as there's some sort of path.
But there is a path here.
But it's reliant on the tenant showing up at court.
It's always reliant on the tenant. We can't drag them to court. Make them hold them accountable.
But if it was a fine, like, if you broke the law and it was a fine, then it wouldn't be reliant on that. I don't know. I think it's worth asking-
When you say fine, you mean a fine payable to the court, payable to the tenant? I mean, is it a fine payable to us? Is the, I think the tenant's less likely to agree with them in court if they're not the one getting it paid.
It has to be through court. It's just kind of like if, you know, I lent you money and we had a contract and I violated the contract.
Yeah, I just don't, I just see, I don't see a scenario where the tenants are still going to show up if they got their security money back before the court date.
Well, they might if they felt like they, you know, if they've been couch-surfing and they're pissed off even if they got their money back. They're like, you know what, there's still an avenue for me to get some sort of award.
Yeah, I don't have a better answer than that. I'm just wondering if there is.
I mean, there's a path here and I think it's part of, and the landlord tenant relation council is really wants to get the message out, once we have this out there, what people's options are to them by using social media and other forms. Because people know, oh, my landlord's not doing right by me. I have the opportunity to get treble damages by taking them to court. Hopefully, we can motivate more people to take abusive landlords to court in this situation. We can only motivate them. We can't make them do it. We're never going to get 100% of landlords accountable if their tenants aren't willing to hold them accountable.
Okay, so actually, they will show up if the treble damages are significant.
That's what we have right here.
Yep.
So-
We just have to educate them that they could potentially get paid more if they haven't been done right by their landlord. been done right by their landlord.
Okay, thank you for getting me there.
And I'm with you. I just, I just think, we're talking about empowering, they have to grab it, they have to show up in court, but if there was an automatic, whatever it was, fifteen percent, that's actually an incentive. It's, they're already empowered by what we're doing, but if they have an incentive, "I'll get fifteen percent more back," you know, that's going to get people to court, so.
So what do we think that should be?
I don't see how you could bake that into any law, though.
It's, well, that's what we had in Will's original draft.
And then it's gone.
But no, we could, we could bake it right here in 129-49. "In the event that the landlord willfully, without good cause, to return all or a portion of the security deposit." One, "For each day after the expiration of the initial twenty-one day period following surrender of the lease space that the landlord wrongfully fails to return the security deposit or deliver an itemized statement, detailed reasoning for withholding, blah, 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 landlords will be liable for payment to the tenant as follows." And we had twenty-five percent, fifty percent, blah, blah, blah. So then, when they get to court, the treble damage, the damages, when the judge is figuring that out, it's automatically at a starting point of twenty-five percent if it was given back within the third, after twenty-one days, but after.
They still have to go to court.
They do, but twenty-five percent could be like two hundred and fifty bucks or, you know.
But we have treble damages.
Right, but it's, but it's up to the judge what they should be. It could be zero.
It's always still up to the judge's.
Right, but the judge, in theory, the starting point is zero. If we insert this, the starting point is twenty-five percent or fifty percent or whatever.
The judge is saying it's mandatory minimum, mandatory minimum, mandatory minimum, which I still can't think of.
I thought we ran into problems with that.
I think we could get it out for the same reason.
It fell off when we went to the, let's use Ithaca as a model because Ithaca didn't have that in there.
Run it by the attorney and see if, see if he's comfortable with it.
Okay.
He wasn't very comfortable with it last time, at least not with the first numbers that we had. He thought that they were very aggressive. I think the second version where the numbers weren't as high, he was a little more palatable with, but he was still, when I spoke to him, did not feel comfortable with it because we were blazing a new trail and that's why he was very supportive of the ethical law because it's been out there for so long.
Right.
So I don't mind blazing a new trail, but I don't want to get a suit either when we have something that's viable in front of us.
But it's worth kicking back to Will and saying.
Oh, yeah, it's absolutely worth kicking back.
Do we, do you want me to kick it back to him in general or is there, is there, I think this graduated thing is too complicated. I think it should just be a flat, if you don't do it in twenty-one days, it's automatically X percent of the security part is the starting point.
I said fifteen, you said twenty-five, did I say twenty?
I just, because it said twenty-five on the last one, it wasn't like, I don't know. I think it does, for trailblazing purposes, helpful to not be an exorbitant number.
It also, from what Will was telling me during the same conversation, fourteen days, anything less than twenty-one days is also trailblazing because I think already has twenty-one days, so.
So twenty percent?
I mean, that's kind of what brought us back to this point.
Run it by him. We'll just ask him a question.
Okay. I kind of wanted to finalize this, but I think we're doing good and we can take, till the next one.
I think all of us are probably fine with fifteen, twenty, twenty-five. The point is, can we get, Will okay with the idea of a minimum fee, right?
Yeah. Okay.
So we should nail this down the next time we talk about it?
Yeah.
Should we be ready to go to court?
All right. Dennis is giving us a co-star fee update.
Everything is moving along. Bits are due in a little bit over a month on 115. We've got a decent stream of questions coming in from the haulers. It seems like there is a good amount of interest here. Like any, it's, as I've been saying, for the whole process, it's just someone has to bid because that was the problem with past attempts to try and get this done is that nobody could get anybody to bid on it. And it seems like there's enough interest that I'm very hopeful we will be getting bids.
What's the date? Sorry, if you just.
January fifteenth.
Jan fifteenth is when we get the.
Is the deadline for?
No, it's when we open the bids.
That's when they're delivered.
Oh, so open and what's close? Do you remember?
Well, right, so.
It was January fifteenth is noon is when they were due and I think we're going to open the haulers later.
Yeah, you can hand it that afternoon.
Okay.
It's kind of the same.
Right. Cool. I'm so psyched.
Me too. I'm RFP blind at this point. This is something I've been complaining about since I first moved to Newport in nineteen ninety-seven. I'll be happy to make something happen.
Well, I hear about this a lot from constituents and they're happy, especially one that I happen to live with, who can't understand at all why we don't have it, so.
Hopefully, we will soon.
Yeah.
Okay, I motion that we sign this letter of support for the town's application for the UPWP program as they want to seek bike pad funds, planning money.
Aye.
All in favor? I motion that we approve bills and claims.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion that we approve this copier plan from Clerk Shaw.
Second.
All in favor? Back on October eleventh, we approved a stormwater law after the Ulster County Claiming Board gave it a thumbs up. What we need to do is readopt the law. This is the stormwater law, chapter one sixty-five, and we need to officially recognize that it has a negative declaration under seeker. Will suggested that we could also add that not only does it have a negative declaration, but this type of law is actually protective for the environment. So that's my motion.
Seven.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I motion that we, so, okay, before I make a motion, so Dennis, I don't know if you.
Yeah, I did, at the last meeting, when you asked for me to be included in that email with the information, I was not included. I never received anything regarding that.
That's what I was wondering. So we did have our Clerk Treasurer's Office review this situation and we posed the questions that we discussed. They feel pretty strongly that we should move forward with authorizing the renewal of MVP and using Ulster Savings as the administrator, switching from Mid Hudson VIP. But if you feel like you want to get a little bit more comfortable, you know, just because you're more familiar with this industry than the rest of us, I'm fine with pausing. Or do you want to just?
It's not time, as long as it's not time-sensitive, it would make progress.
I got the impression that it was.
But given that it's, we're running up against the end of the year, that's typically the kind of thing that needs to be.
Yeah.
Well, the rep from MVP said that using Ulster Savings as opposed to continuing the way we're doing it now would add an extra burden and make things more complex.
From DIP, yeah.
But our Clerk Treasurer's Office reviewed his comments and felt like they were already comfortable with what, you know, it's, they made their decision to use Ulster Savings as an administrator from what they felt was a, you know, a well-vetted place.
And he was going to his business.
Yeah. I'm, I'm good with going with the recommendation of Roseanne and Nancy.
I'm very confident there about this.
Yeah, especially with stuff like this. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next item, so we have our water treatment plant exploration project and we basically have two more spots where we're interested in drilling holes. One, we already approved Jim Wild to create an access pass and to drill a hole and that's down in the area that's close to the Mohawk Preserve property. I actually ran into Glenn Hoagland today and he's very supportive of us looking for water there and even said, "Oh, you know, we could do a press release, you know, about the municipality, working in conjunction with the preserve," because that was a Department of Health requirement. Because what we were looking to do is for that, we're calling this Site Number Four, is that we want to drill one hundred feet off of the property line. Because you always have to have at least a hundred feet of ownership plus the additional hundred feet of control. And the Department of Health was fine if we get the Mohawk Preserve to say, "Well, that steep slope that is preserved property, they have zero intention of developing it for anything." And the DOH was like, "Okay, well, if you can get the Mohawk Preserve to just state that," you know, we, you know, one path we could pursue is like getting an easement and getting the preserve to get us an easement, but kind of the lesser involved step would be just to get the preserve to say that they're fine with it and that the DOH was going to be fine with it. And actually, Glenn Hoagland told me today that their attorney even wrote them a letter that said that it's fine and they actually really liked the idea. So we've already approved Jim Wild to drill that hole and degrade that path. What we need to do is approve the hiring of Chazen and Russell to do the hydrology work on Site Four.